That I'm going to go ahead and call this deliberation session of the Bloomington Cotton Council to order here on December 10th at 6:31. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, I'm not doing this in the usual order, so bear with me. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
This one works.
Here.
Okay.
Another button switch.
Rosenbarger. Here, here.
I got Zulik.
Here.
Daley.
Here.
Stossberg.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Rallo.
Rallo.
Sorry, Flaherty.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. As I said, tonight we are having a deliberation session. We're going to be discussing outcome-based budgeting and, believe it or not, 2027 priorities because municipal budgeting starts early. So I want to thank in advance Councilmember Piedmont Smith, who organized the discussion this evening. We will discuss outcome-based budgeting and the progress so far, various outcomes that we already have in city plans, and really kind of the main goal, I think, tonight is to try to, as a council, prioritize outcomes, which didn't really happen last year because, you know, this is a process. We will have public comment in there and then next steps, and then we will adjourn. So I think at this point, I'm turning over to Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you. So I do want to mention I'm chair of the Fiscal Committee, Special Committee of Council, and we did review this agenda or the general ideas that went into this agenda tonight, so it wasn't totally flying solo here. So I just wanted to remind everybody about the context that both the mayor's administration and the council agreed to move towards an outcome-based budgeting process. The council passed a resolution in June of 2024 regarding this, and of course during the budget process for the 2026 budget, the administration did move towards outcome-based budgeting, sort of an in-between step, which they called priority-based budgeting. And really, the big difference is that compared with what the city budget, how the city budget was created previously, is that previously, we would basically take the budget from the current year and just tweak things, you know, we need more for this, we need less for that, this costs more now, we need another staff person, et cetera. With outcome-based budgeting, we look at what outcomes we want to achieve, then we back up and look at programs that will get us towards those outcomes, and then we back up further and look at what, how, what those programs cost. And I know that our deputy mayor Gretchen Knapp, who's here, and our comptroller Jessica McClellan have been working on evaluating all the programs and putting them in categories so that we can better track what exactly they cost. But I think one of the big questions at this point is which programs do we prioritize? And to look at what we prioritize, we really need to go back to look at the outcomes that our city plans have said we are all working towards. And since we can't do everything, we also have need to prioritize those outcomes and kind of decide, given our limited funding, what outcomes are most important for the community. So hopefully, my colleagues all got a chance to take a look at the packet that came with this for this meeting. Are there any questions before we kind of dive into the outcomes? And if, yes?
I have, I really appreciate that we're doing this. I also had a lot of like structural questions about, I'll just like surface a small one without getting into like a lot of detail. A lot of things that need to change to accomplish our outcomes are not, in fact, expenditures, their policy change, their legislation and policy change. How should, so that's just an example of like a number of structural issues that inform how we might engage in this exercise. And I'm just getting into the agenda and getting it pulled up from my files, so apologies if there's like adequate space on the agenda for discussing that. But I was curious for the suitability of a topic like that at a session like this, and just wanted to get your input as the person running the meeting.
I think that's a really good point. I think that we could probably talk about that through the course of the meeting, as we look at the outcomes that I've collated from our city plans. And we can say, okay, you know, if a majority of council members say this outcome is the most important, well, is that, do we influence that just by budget or by policy as well? And kind of we can, we can definitely should consider that once we prioritize our outcomes. Does that make sense?
It does. I worry that my structural questions are going to have like an impact on the potential utility of the exercise. But I think, I think, let's proceed. Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm always, yeah.
No, no, I think these are all good questions. And I think the whole, this whole movement towards outcome-based budgeting is necessarily going to be messy. So I think we just need to.
Dig in.
Dig in, exactly. And if Councilmember Osari were here, I would also ask him if he had anything to add, since he was kind of spearheading the move towards outcome-based budgeting. But hopefully, he will arrive shortly. Yes?
I'll also add to kind of address that question, like, to some degree, I think, like that kind of legislative or process or policy changes falls under the umbrella of, of the effective governance. What's that bucket called? High-performing government. And so that could be that kind of idea, like if something might take a lot of legislation and go, well, if that's like, how much time is that going to take? Because time ends up being, say, like staff hours. And so like prioritizing that as part of staff hours under high-performing government might be, depending on what it is, a pathway.
Thank you.
I'm at a little bit of a loss right now as, as chair of this meeting, whether or not Councilmember Piedmont Smith should be chair or should be kind of recognized as chair right now because she's organizing this discussion. So Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you want to just keep on going?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think it's, I shared my game plan with, with you also. President Stossberg, if you want to go through it, that would be perfectly fine with me.
Okay, well, that was maybe the, the context, which is part A in the game plan, which is page three of our packet tonight. Would you agree?
Yes.
Great. So part B is outcomes and city plans. And so Councilmember Piedmont Smith made a, made a list in the packet and has two discussion questions here. Does everybody, is everybody interested in adding an environment category or bucket? And then also, I'll give a little bit more context to this, since I'm on fiscal committee, too, is, you know, should we be open to adding to the outcomes listed in these three city plans? You know, so how should we add outcomes, basically? Like, we kind of started with the plans because they were established documents of the city. But are there other outcomes that we should consider? Are there other plans or studies we should consider? How should we consider those things? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, what do you want to start with?
Well, I guess I would like to start with the summary of outcomes that I've drawn from the three plans listed, the comprehensive plan, the climate action plan, and the Safe Streets for All action plan. That last one basically just has one outcome, to reduce deaths and serious accidents to zero. So I guess I'd like to get some feedback, whether looking at these, where I categorize the outcomes is appropriate. Among the, and I did assume we would add environment, but if you feel like we should distribute the environment ones among the other existing six categories, you can speak up about that as well. And just want to get feedback. I don't want to assume that I have done all of this accurately. Did my best.
Yeah, why don't we speak to the environment question first? Does that, does that work for people? How do people feel about adding environment as, as a category? Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Anybody else? Councilmember Zulik?
I'm in favor of this as well, and I hear from a lot of my younger residents and constituents that the environment is a very strong priority for them. And so definitely on behalf of District Six, I vote yes.
Okay, other comments about adding? Councilmember Rallo?
Are my mics not, what is it on? Yes, it's, to me, it's implicit in human flourishing to have attention to the environment. And it, of course, appears it is explicit in our comprehensive plan, sustainability action plan, climate action plan. So I, I think it should be included as its own topic. And I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith describing all of those categories within the proposed new category, topics, I should say, or goals.
Goals. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, so I'll try to bring in some of like more like systems questions where relevant. And I think here's one, like, sure, we can have environment as a category, like, if we run out of categories. I, I must say, and I know I wasn't involved in the groundwork that did that this year, but I didn't find much usefulness for the buckets of categorization in the priority-based budget framework this year. It felt like a pretty arbitrary exercise, and I actually felt like I had less transparency and visibility into the budget than ever before, because we used to use a process where at least departments set goals for themselves and reported on those goals every year. There was actually a public dashboard with all those goals. I think that wasn't always tied well enough to our city plans. And so I think there were some shortcomings from an outcome-based framework with that old approach. But I, like, this is just an example, I found that more useful as a council member than simply saying the transportation budget and this percentage of the public works budget and this whatever, you know, is, is transportation category. Like, I just didn't find much value. And that's, I guess, I'm challenging the, or the assumption that we want buckets of, you know, six or seven, eight broad categories of, of outcomes or goals. I guess my question would be like, to what end? Like, is it serving us? And not to like, sorry, I feel like I have a lot of cold water kind of suggestions of that. But again, I really do appreciate all the work that's gone into it and the work of the committee this year to try something new and to, you know, to, yeah, grapple seriously with the question of what it would mean to have an outcome-based budgeting system that we're all bought into.
We've, the fiscal committee has talked a little bit about that, that bucket thing. And I don't know at this point if Councilmember Piedmont Smith or Rallo or I, who are all on that committee, or Deputy Mayor Knapp or Comptroller McClellan might want to come to talk a little bit to that question that you have. Because the short answer is, it was kind of like step one, and the usefulness might come more at steps two or three, and there wasn't time this year to do that. Deputy Mayor is kind of creeping up to the table. So why don't you go ahead and talk about that a little bit in terms of how you see the future of these buckets? And while you're doing it, my question about the environmental, the environment bucket is, do you think, and this might be Comptroller McClellan, I kind of asked her this at fiscal committee, but maybe you guys have talked about it since, whether we could easily put things into an environment category because they're so directly related to that?
So for the record, Deputy Mayor Gretchen Knapp, the way the accounting software is set up, you do have to have a top-level category. So there is value within the process that we have to follow as a whole to have those top-level categories. The data that we all really want to see and that we couldn't get to in time this year was the more detailed numbers by program. Because, and I've said it before, but I'll just keep saying it because it's complicated. When we go through this process, in order to be able to say, we've spent X dollars on updating green energy stuff in the building, for example, for City Hall, we have to allocate every single dollar that the city spends to a program and to a category. And so that, that's why we had all these annoying questions about how granular do you want to be. So it's completely possible to add a category for climate. And in fact, because ESD has sort of three different areas, the comptroller did already set up their budget this year with a new split so that they could more easily track what they're spending in terms of the arts, small business and long-term economic development, and climate and transportation demand management. So there's kind of a natural process for that has already started. But those big buckets are still valuable because as we do go into the more granular work, it will, there has to be within the program software, a bigger bucket. And so that's still helpful in terms of creating a dashboard from the data that we ultimately get out of that system. It doesn't mean that we can't have, you know, many finer points within that, but we do need big buckets to start.
So to kind of speak, maybe, if I'm paraphrasing, Councilmember Flaherty's like concern, like systematic concern, like what, what kind of, because I would also agree, like, just having those big categories felt a little bit empty compared to, say, established goals for departments. But what could we expect to see in the future in terms of those budget presentations and, and meeting categories and potentially other more granular goals?
I think it's a great question, and I think it in part depends on how granular you want to be. And, you know, my observation is that each of us has issues that we want to be very granular about and other issues that we're maybe not as interested in being granular about, for whatever reason, more administrative areas or, you know, things that just aren't passion projects. But the, the goal has always been to get to measurable outcomes and goals. The problem is, is that the work it takes to put, to go through and say, for every dollar that you're spending, exactly how are you categorizing that and what is the program? And if your parks, you have, you know, your youth programs, is youth programs one category? Or do you treat it more like CFRD, which thinks of things in terms of individual events and themes that they work through? So the time that staff spend doing that is time that goes away from writing extensive, you know, narratives about what they're doing, which is why we were so short on narrative this year, is that we put so much time into trying to learn the software and get started with it. So, you know, once we know what the program areas are that we want to track, then it's much easier to, to say, what is the goal for that? And of course, for most work that staff do, they already have goals. And this will just be a way of, you know, capturing some of the things that we already do that may be invisible to all of us, and then making sure that the things that matter most to us are definitely visible to all of us that, you know, we may not have a, a name for right now.
Councilmember Flaherty, just thought.
Small clarifying question, which is, are the tags mutually exclusive? You have to pick one, you can't have two applied to a thing?
The way I, and I've, it's been a minute since I looked at the software, but my memory is that there was a top level and then a secondary level. So, yeah, you would probably, you know, in order to be able to say, we're spending X on this area, it can only be assigned to one area or another.
Got it.
Even though obviously, there's lots of overlap.
I could offer a brief reflection on what I heard, if you'd like, or, which is just, I'm not certain that it would be useful for me to know that we spend $473,000 on X, you know, activities at like a, you know, drilled down granular level in the context of outcome-based budgeting. I think, I do care about the dollars and cents to a degree. I more care about, are we funding and doing the activities, the actions and the outputs that we, to the best of our good faithability, believe are going to lead to the outcomes in sort of a logic model framework? Okay, here's the outcome we want. Here's a set of actions that we use staff expertise and consultant expertise to develop to try to get to that outcome. Are we doing those things? And I think we're going to talk about that a little bit more as we talk about like adding outcomes and what it, what it looks like. But I guess it seems relevant to this tagging question because I very much don't want to have like make-work for, for staff on tagging all the things. I'm curious for other council members' perspective around the, the utility of like an actual specific dollar figure for X, as opposed to, or in contrast to just being able to say, these are the actions that we are taking that directly support X outcome. And they are funded, you know, whether that's staff time or whatever it is, like.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I think, I think both are important. Because, so the question, are we funding and taking the actions that we believe will lead to the outcomes we want, right? So the, the proof is then, okay, we have this program, which we think is going to lead to the outcomes we want. But we need some measure of whether it really does. And we also need to know how much money we put into that program, and then do a cost-benefit analysis. It's like, okay, we're getting, you know, positive outcomes for like 20 families, but we're putting in $100,000, you know?
Sure.
So I think both, what you just said is important, but also understanding what inputs we give as far as time and money.
Yeah.
And time is money.
I understood. I agree.
Councilmember Rallo?
Actually, for those coming in, there was another meeting, so we've just gained another couple of council members. We're kind of discussing our six buckets of outcomes, the proposal of adding environment as a seventh, and also just generally, kind of the general question of the usefulness of buckets and how detailed we want to be about it and understand a little bit more about the, the accounting system and how that plays into it. So, Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, my question for the deputy mayor is, kind of broadly speaking, the priority-based viewpoint versus the outcomes-based, which is, we've made explicit here in this document, the outcome-based is largely based upon guiding documents, which I think are very important. They were community-derived. Spent a lot of time and money, you know, developing these. They were adopted by council, supported by the previous administration. Are these documents that you're utilizing for, okay, I just wanted to get to that basic, because, I mean, every, you know, you're relatively new administration, you have your own priorities, too. But, you know.
We're not in the business of reinventing the wheel and areas that we've hired and appointed people, you know, to be, to bring their expertise to bear. And they and their teams are continuing to use those documents as they always have. I think we do have areas in the city where there are not guiding documents. ESD doesn't have guiding documents, per se. CFRD doesn't have guiding documents in the same way that transportation and some other areas have, have documents. So there are gray areas in there, but no one is ignoring any of those plans. I've read them all.
Yeah.
And so I'm aware of them, and, you know.
I wasn't implying that.
No, no, I'm just saying there, I want to reassure everyone that no one has abandoned those plans. And if I can just say one more thing, and then if you don't mind, I'll take a seat, unless you need me again. But to Councilmember Flaherty's point, I think, you know, what you're wanting to see is, how much are we spending on, on something, and is it really achieving that goal? Something to understand about our accounting program, the way it currently works without this overlay, is that there's no way of tracking a program's or outcomes expenses except by a spreadsheet. All it tracks is general categories of spending like printing or personnel or whatever. So if we want to, in any variation, be able to say, what are we spending on XYZ outcome, output, you know, anything, we do have to add a layer and spend the time to put that money in. And whether we can get in this new cycle to getting all of those numbers in, I imagine that we will all have a learning curve once we see the detail of like, oh, we're spending that much on fill-in-the-blank, or, you know, wait, we only spend, we don't spend anything on this other thing, whatever that might be. So I don't imagine that we're going to all be 100% satisfied with the budget this time, but we should make a lot more progress in terms of being able to see real numbers and have a more meaningful conversation.
Okay, I think, at least for now. I mean, I don't, I don't know how much you might end up having to walk back and forth this evening, but you'll get your steps in. Are there other comments from anybody about the utility of adding a bucket for environment or how we're using those categories? Councilmember Osari?
Yes, we should, we should. It helps to track things. It helps because these conversations, as we're realizing, you sort of set them, they seed future conversations. And so it is an area that certainly all of us individually care about a lot. It's something that all of our constituents care about an awful lot. It'll help us to be very clear about sort of how we're operationalizing plans that exist that are relevant to environment. So I would be a very strong yes for that.
Right. Councilmember Zulik?
Thank you. And thank you to Deputy Mayor Knapp for coming up and, and working some things out with us. I think there are multiple ways to do it, and I think that whatever way we choose is fine. But when we think about input versus output, I do think that especially as we are in this multiple-year process of getting to the outcome-based budgeting, that understanding our capability for input would, will be able to help us more easily identify what we're capable of in terms of providing outputs. And so what those goals are and the specific numbers, because we can't, I don't think we can make a proper goal-setting chart until we fully understand what our inputs are.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Like, so, so specifically, like inputs being like our revenues and our priorities being like, like actually prioritizing our buckets?
Well, I'm referring to the, the recent budgets that we've had and how the, the numbers were sorted out. I think that it will be helpful moving forward to understand how that was decided for next year, if that makes sense.
Other thoughts on this question?
Still getting, Councilmember Zulik was getting at, I'm sorry.
Okay, I don't know how else to say it.
Like, do you mean how the initial budgets from this year, like however much was in the different departments?
Yeah, I do think, I do think it was helpful just moving forward. So now that we have a baseline, we can kind of figure out what, what we're going to do next year now. Like, in terms of what buckets we might want to switch to get closer to those outcomes.
Thanks. That was helpful, input, input, about the, where we're trying to get and how that might serve us. I agree, there will be surprising outcomes, and I think it will have some utility. I think what I'm grappling with is to make sure it's juice is worth the squeeze on the thing. And like, yes, metrics and quantitative data are helpful to the extent that they are telling you the thing you want to know. And I worry a little bit, there's a lot of actions that, like, let's just talk about like a multi-use path on a high-crash corridor that is mitigating emissions because it is like helping support mode shift through infrastructure investments. It's increasing safety, trying to reduce deaths on our streets and serious injuries. It might involve narrowing a street, which allows for more tree canopy, which, you know, like, there are other, it might increase the viability of a business there, so there's economic development components. It's, just knowing enough about our plans and the types of things we do, and you could say, there's a main thing, or you can pick one, but like, I, I worry about us reading too much into, we're spending X here and only Y here, when you've got that type of dynamic, cross-cutting almost anything we could do. So that's it.
Councilmember Osari?
And I think to that point as well, to the point that both of you are making, it is, and I think we've, we've raised this in multiple other instances, is that thinking that way is a challenge as well, because not all, we might have goals that are, that are of equal priority to us, but they're not all going to cost the same. And so, you know, it also sort of changes, you know, we might be doing a lot of things under a particular bucket, but it's because they're all like cheap things. And, and then just as, as a, as a follow-up to that, I think one of the reasons, though, why I am particularly interested in having sort of a robust set of buckets, and particularly around something that we, you know, sort of in a narrative fashion agree on, is because I think, and I'll just say it, and please disagree with me if I'm totally wrong or off-base, or if you guys don't feel this way, but my, my feeling is that we have a lot of plans. Some of, you know, it's kind of a contested question, because some of them are like real plans, some of them are unofficial plans, et cetera. I think that was sort of the tail end of what, what Deputy Mayor was saying. But my feeling, sitting there often, But my feeling, sitting there often, is that we kind of, not we, but generally when people are presenting to us, they kind of pick things, sort of do this like, oh yeah, that's in the whatever plan, and they sort of attach it to something they wanted to do anyways. And I'd like to think about, and, you know, one of my personal goals for advocating so much for outcome-based thinking even just, is to get us thinking the other way around, that it's not like, I want to do this thing, and then you go, where can I find a plan that supports it? But that we say, well, we went through this long process of coming up with these plans that have these clear set of goals and activities and outcomes, and that we follow them, and that we can show, and maybe some of them, we can have the clear conversation, like, you know, we don't think we need to do that, or we can think of better ideas now, great, fine. But it's, but I think that there needs to be that clear set of thinking, not, not just appending, you know, nice words from plans onto ideas and programs that we're already pursuing. And to wrap that up, I think that by having a category, I think that's the value of these categories, is it does sort of give us a focal point for that conversation, so that we keep having it and keep having it.
Yeah, thank you. I want to second both of those concepts, that idea of starting with the outcome and then doing something that supports the outcome, instead of doing something that you want to do, and then figuring out what it supports, and then also being really, I don't know, deliberate, careful, conscientious about how we categorize things, understanding that things fall into so many categories, at the same time, as I think, based on the time that Councilmember Piedmont Smith allocated, she put about 20 minutes into talking about these outcomes. I think nobody said that environment should not be added, so environment as a seventh bucket sounds good over here. And then perhaps we need to shift into Part C, which is an activity that might help further our conversations about prioritizing. Does that work for folks? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you want to talk about what it is that we're supposed to do?
Okay, so I didn't have time to write the categories on these Post-it sheets, but I will do that real quick. And the idea is for each councilmember to grab a Post-it note and a pen, or some more Sharpie, and write down for each category what your top three, what you think are the top three most important outcomes.
Oh.
And if you could only think of one or two, that's fine, but write, you know, one, two, and three, if you do multiple, for each category, and your initials, so that we know who it is, and stick them in the categories on those sheets. And then after we've had some time to do that, the plan is to come back and look at the sheets one by one and see where we might coalesce around prioritizing certain outcomes in each category.
I would like to go on the record here and say that I prepared for an activity that was different, and I clearly did not understand the activity. Yeah, I think I did the homework wrong, too. Are we allowed to work together if we need to?
Sure.
Okay, great. Councilmember Flaherty?
Is, are the things we are writing down supposed to be verbatim what is in pages seven through nine of the last four pages of the packet? Here's an example. The quantity and quality of green space within the community has increased. If that's my, one of my top three priorities, I would write that sentence down and put it up there.
Well, I think you could shorten it and just say green space.
Oh, okay. But what if there's multiple things that speak to green space, or to, you know, so if we're trying to say...
Well, they're just kind of small, that's all.
This is a set of outcomes that are in our packet?
Yes.
And those are the set of outcomes that we're choosing from for this exercise?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, but what if, what if we have other outcomes?
In the previous part of tonight's agenda, we were supposed to talk about...
Right.
And, and we don't, you know, we can, we can go back and do this, too. We're supposed to talk about, are there things that are not on this list that should be included, and then on what basis should they be included? So they're not in the comprehensive plan or the climate action plan?
Yeah.
So where did you get this, and should we include it? Now, we could certainly do that later and redo this exercise, or redo some version of this, if we want to just move ahead, but yeah, I don't think we have to be limited to these in general. But for this exercise, I wanted us to have some agreement that, you know, it's not just an outcome that we're taking from the sky and writing down, it's something that's in our plans.
Okay, so understanding that, I will once again say I definitely did my homework wrong. Do we want to go back to the prior section B, and are there particular outcomes that anybody wants to add to the list that Councilmember Piedmont Smith started for us? Councilmember Flaherty, what do you want to add, and where do you want to put it?
So I'm not going to answer that directly, because my answer, like, I think it's already been brought up, at least by Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Zari, that we, there's an unevenness to where we have formal city plans, which I would characterize as plans that went through a community process driven by administration, and had formal adoption or approval of some count by the city council. That's occupying a portion of the pie, you know? And in the other areas, we don't have that. And it's something I raised in last year's budgeting sessions, when the administration was coming forward with priority action plans, and I asked repeatedly, how's the council going to be involved, are these going to be approved? The answers were, were not really, and no. And those are mayoral priorities, and that's fine, the mayor can have priorities. I think we've run into limits about being able to use those priorities for this purpose, because they're, they're not in fact, they haven't got through the process of what the comp plan did, or what the climate action plan or the transportation plan has. So I think if we ever, if we want to do this holistically, like, it's, I mean, we can do the exercise that's prescribed for us tonight, I just need to, I think we need to recognize its limits. And if we want to approach outcome-based budgeting holistically, we need to have both a confronting of the fact that there's whole areas of city government for which we don't have formal city plans, and maybe develop them. And then second, which is that these plans that we have even, weren't all designed using the same framework, which I think is reflected in the fact that the Safe Streets for All Action Plan has one outcome, and that the transportation plan has none. I wouldn't characterize either of those plans that way at all, actually. I would say that implementing a shared street design on Kirkwood isn't, is, you know, an outcome. Or if you want to go farther downstream from that, that a vibrant, you know, like, maybe it wasn't stated in the right language, that a vibrant downtown connector between sample gates and the square in a pedestrian street plaza, you know, enhances economic vitality, safety, blah, blah, blah. So I, none of these plans were designed necessarily with outcome-based budgeting in mind, nor were they designed to like interlock consistently with one another. And so that's the other major, like, structural challenge, to using the existing plans verbatim to do like-for-like analysis of priority outcomes. Okay, that's my soapbox.
I mean, I think we can, we can go one of several directions here. We could just use the, the outcomes that I've summarized in the packet as guideline, and, you know, come up with separate outcomes that we can defend through various ways, if asked, or, and carry on with the exercise. Or we can take a step back, not to the exercise, do it another time perhaps, and talk about areas where we don't have plans. I mean, clearly, public safety, there's no plan. So I wrote down some outcomes that I would want to see, but, you know, it's, it's nothing that we've all agreed upon. So either way, I don't know what the will of the majority is.
You said that we, when you were listing...
Can you speak into your microphone?
Sorry, that you, when you said that we can defend, does it have a light, huh?
It's on.
It's on. Yeah, it's on, we can hear you.
That we can defend, you know, our, our outcome priority. Some, you were, you were referring to the ones that have plans that we can point to that were community-developed and based by...
Well, since we don't have a plan for everything, as Councilmember Flaherty said, we might consider just adding outcomes, but we don't want to just add them willy-nilly. You know, you want, we want to say, well, my constituents really care about this, and I've heard this, or the community survey has indicated this, and therefore I'm putting this in. You know, not just, well, I really like goats, and so I'm going to put that in.
Yeah, I was wanting to clarify on what you meant by defense, or defend.
Yeah, I didn't mean, like, put up your dukes, or...
Like, we had ideological bent towards something, that's not what you meant by defend. You don't have to defend your, your, your priority that way, if it's, if you just acknowledge that it's a personal priority, as opposed to something that's laid out in a community-driven, generated plan.
I guess, I guess so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not the police on this.
Right, I mean, I think that there can be space for personal priorities, but if we're going to count them as kind of an outcome that we, as the council, agree on, I think, then you have to basically like defend or convince us all that it's like, that it deserves to be on the list. I think that we have two options right now on how to proceed. One is to proceed with Councilmember Piedmont Smith's activity with the list that has been provided with us. And then maybe the second option is to go through these buckets one at a time and add outcomes, in that defense kind of, you know, like, where are we getting the outcome, what are people prepared for and interested to do right now? Councilmember Zari?
I was going to suggest a combo. Why don't you do the second, why don't we do the second thing first, and then, time permitting, do the first thing?
All right, great. Let's do housing and homelessness first. I feel like we need to have somebody help take notes, so that then if we add outcomes... Yeah, yeah, we can go ahead and make a, make a sheet. Well, let's just have one sheet for each, for each bucket, so let's start with housing and homelessness.
Affordable housing and homelessness, or housing and homelessness?
It's just housing and homelessness, because affordable housing would be, would be a piece of, of housing overall. So underneath this category, we have A, B, and C, so we can start our list up there on the board with D, and then maybe our packet, our packet can get amended later on to include all these. So we have, for the public at home who might not be looking at the packet, increase the range of affordable housing options that are universally designed and environmentally sustainable, from, I think that's the comp plan. B, improve access of neighborhood housing to community amenities, employment, and essential services. And then C, increased diversity within neighborhoods. And all of those look to be in Chapter Five of the comp plan. Councilmember Zuluk, what would you like to add to that?
Well, sorry, I have a question first, and then potentially in addition. When we say in C, increased diversity within neighborhoods, are we talking about people or are we talking about housing stock?
Does anybody have the comp plan?
I think it was housing stock.
Okay. That would be helpful to clarify.
Okay. How about, who wants to look that up? I'll look that up real quick.
Okay.
While we continue on.
As long as, as long as C is discussing housing stock, I don't have anything to add.
Councilmember Zari?
I would add something along the lines of increasing the, the, how, how long, how quickly people can get permits, making it, no, I made that sound like I want to make it take longer. The other, other way around, making, making building things here faster, or something like that.
Easier.
Easier. Increasing the ease of permitting, or something.
Is that, is that an outcome?
I mean, we can, we can make it better, we can do semantics like later, but like, I mean, I don't know, I guess, I guess that's a good, important question. Do we want to spend a lot of time right now talking, because like, I'd, I'd agree, that's not like the most eloquent way of saying it. I think that there's, it needs to be measurable, needs to be, like, a lot of things that we need to go through, but I'm just saying, generally speaking, that's the area in which I'd like to see some change.
You could phrase it differently.
Sure. But if we want to have the conversation about like, how would you exactly phrase it, we should have that conversation, too.
I guess I feel like the, the point of that is to get more houses built, and so the outcome is to get more houses built, and a way to get that housing...
I mean, reduce time to build approval is an outcome.
Yeah, I, I'm particularly interested in the, in the time to, in the time to approval, like, can we...
Okay, can we reduce time to approval then up there, instead of permitting time? So...
Potentially, the outcome could be that local developers are able to feasibly make the investment for future properties. We hear, we hear all the times that local developers can't make that investment because of the time that it takes to just be approved for the permitting process. So...
Or conditional approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What, what was that, Councilmember Rosenberger?
Isn't that what you guys were going to say, you two? Reduce conditional use?
I added conditional use as one of the reasons that time and money is added to press, to, it causes delay.
Okay, Councilmember Rallo?
I think that that topic deserves a debate, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of just expediting development, and with the idea that the outcome is going to be a community good. I think that there are ways to achieve that. For instance, the South Bend model of having a palette of housing types and saying, you know, if you choose one of these, we can expedite it. But I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very weary of seeing buildings go up that are frankly unaesthetic and shoddily designed. And I loathe the idea of reproducing that, just under the banner of, this is going to yield housing for people, cheaper housing. Not sure that's going to occur, but anyway. So it deserves a deeper discussion.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you have an answer to Councilmember Zuluk's original question?
Yes, so the outcome increased diversity within neighborhoods is both about types of housing and people, because it has indicators such as neighborhood diversity index to view changes in racial and ethnic diversity in neighborhoods over time. It also has ratio of ownership to rental units by neighborhood and other things, so... And then I also had something I wanted to add.
Okay, should we keep going on the, the question that Councilmember Rallo brought up about maybe phrasing of, I feel like it's phrasing of the outcome versus the way to get to the outcome? Councilmember Zari?
I would just say that I think, I think that that's, that's, I agree with the, with the concern, and to me, it's a question of two different, it's a two different toolkits question. We can address that issue separate from the budget, but if the, I think to me, the test here is, is if the, if the planning department, if the mayor's office came and said, hey, we'd like to invest in another position in planning, so that we can speed up the, the times that we can get approvals of things that are already in the UDO, like, that may be something we would support. If, if they said, hey, we're going to invest in more technology, so that we can raise the, how quickly we're able to approve things that are already approved within the UDO, that might be something we support. So, so it's a slightly different question. I think it's a valid concern, it's one that I share, I'm really interested in exploring, but I think that it's a separate question than the budgetary priority of can we make it easier to do things that we want to see done in the city.
Does that address, Councilmember Rallo, your concern in terms of that as a, as an outcome, even if it's not perfectly framed right now?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, you said that you had something that you wanted to add as well, and then I'll go over to Councilmember Rosenberger.
I wanted to add, make homelessness brief, rare, and non-repeating. That's from, directly from the Heading Home Plan.
Does anybody want to challenge or ask Councilmember Piedmont Smith to defend her added outcome?
I think I have a similar reflection to what was just being discussed a little bit, and I sort of piped in from over here. And I sort of piped in from over here. Or there, like, there are activities and outputs and indicators that might be like leading measures of achieving something later. There are also outcomes that we might frame as near-term, medium-term, long-term outcomes. Sometimes in logic models, you see the long-term outcomes framed as impact. I think what Councilmember Piedmont Smith just stated is probably in that like impact category. Zero deaths on our street by 2039 might be another. And while I agree that those are great visioning impacts, I think we're gonna have to deal with that like, that maybe isn't the most useful in the end for like, all the thing. I don't know. There's, well, I mean, it is useful. It is useful as like the set of priorities. Maybe impact type, like big outcomes are, long-range outcomes are the best thing to like have an overarching vision. But I guess, I feel like there's often a disconnect between the thing we say we're trying to achieve and then our ability to implement the actions and achieve the near-term milestones and outcomes potentially, like reduce permitting time, right? Like, that's a, that's a shorter-term outcome, more discreet. And often, we struggle to like draw the connection and then actually do the short-term things. And when we're talking about annual budgeting cycles, like, yes, the grand vision is still important, we need to understand it. But like, we're gonna need, so that's not, that's not like a, you know, a vote against what it is, well, just a very much support. I'm just, again, kind of reflecting on like, from a systems perspective, like, what is it that we actually need to be able to like operationalize this?
Okay. Can I maybe bring something in from fiscal committee that I feel like what, especially Councilmember Flaherty, what you just said in that idea of outcomes that are long-range or short-range? I mean, I feel like this is like layers of an onion or like a thought tree or something where it's like we could put lots of things underneath these outcomes. So maybe there can be more outcomes underneath that one. And whereas the permitting thing might be underneath something else, but I'm not sure that we have the capacity tonight to nest that. But I'm kind of saying it as back from fiscal committee because I feel like I've heard both our controller and our deputy mayor talk about that nesting and that that's something that staff is like doing right now, trying to figure out some of those sorts of things. So I think it would be maybe the best use of our time to just put the outcomes up there, whether they're short-term or whether they're long-term, is if we can agree as a body, like, yeah, it should go up there. I don't challenge that it's legitimate, even if it might be a longer term versus a shorter term.
Yeah. Can I triangulate on?
Councilmember, sorry. Yeah.
To triangulate on that, because, because I think that's exactly right, hits the nail on the, on the head to me. But just to think about it, I mean, there's, because we're in one-year cycles, there is some benefit in us knowing, you know, let's use the metaphorical language, our North Star is making homelessness rare, brief, non-repeating. What is in our budget that's going towards addressing homelessness, right? And then, and on a year-by-year basis, now you go, hey, okay, if we're gonna continue funding these things, are we seeing a reduction in the homeless population? And so, you're right, so when you have the, the long-term goal, it is actually really helpful for us because, you know, later we'll start talking about, there's different mechanisms by which, you know, there's, it's not just a up-down conversation. Some of it's like, yeah, we continue that, we want to enhance that funding. We might find, hey, you know, this is actually doing well, but we want to raise that by, want to 10x that this year because it's going so well in years ahead. And so it is useful to sort of tie those rather to the big things so we don't get, yeah, so I mean, because otherwise we'll end up setting ourselves goals like, you know, reduce homelessness by 1% or something like that, and that's worth a million dollars or, right?
Yeah. I mean, absolutely. I just don't think we have the capacity for that.
Yeah, and we don't have to do it today. Yeah, I'm just saying, because I think it was such an important point that we shouldn't, so it's sort of two fingered, what was said.
Okay, Councilmember Rosenberger, I said I'd go back to you. Do you have something to add up here?
This is about permitting, so, oh, like an hour ago. My thought was, I thought like the bigger outcome is like more, people talk about more, having a more predictable process. So whether that is ready-made homes or easier permitting, you know, those are just two of the things to make a more predictable process. So like, if somebody knows they're gonna be asking for all these variances, the predictability of that is like, you're not gonna get to do this kind of thing, right? But then if you're building in our code, then it's like most likely you are. So I feel like it's about predictability is the, is a bigger word for it.
Do you want to add that word up there then? You have the marker, so I think you have the power. Other things to add to the housing and homelessness category, Councilmember Daly.
Better coordinated homeless outreach response. Wraparound services, that type of stuff.
Does anybody want to ask Councilmember Daly to defend her position on that? Councilmember Rallo?
Could she expound on that? What is that? What does that entail?
Wraparound services and, you know, all sorts of social services that go along with trying to get people housed.
So coordinated wraparound services, services for unhoused?
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
If the mic didn't pick it up, Councilmembers Zuluk added including preventative services.
Yes, thank you. Wraparound.
I think coordinated, not necessarily increased.
Preventative and wraparound homeless response services.
Other thoughts on that one? Okay. Other ideas for housing and homelessness outcomes?
I don't know. I'll say it just because in the ideating stage, but increasing, increasing numbers of temporary shelter or something like that, something along those lines.
Beds.
Okay. Temporary sheltering options for unhoused. I feel like both of those might be subcategories under making homeless brief, rare, and non-repeating. And I'm, yeah.
Another one.
Councilmember Rosenberger?
Oh, yeah, please go on.
I would like to say, I sometimes have to re-scroll. So there is improved access of neighborhood housing to amenities, but the other side, I think, is like transit-oriented development. So we are focusing our density on areas where people can more easily get around, walking or on a bus. And then, yes, transit. So I think it's different than, like, this one feels like, one B to me feels like bringing amenities to communities where I think we should, you know, increase our density around amenities. Transit-oriented development, walkable neighborhoods, you know? Anybody?
So, so basically, instead of B seems to imply expanding.
Amenities.
Amenities as opposed to putting housing around amenities.
Yes.
Second.
I think that that could be, I think that B could be both, could include both of those things. But that maybe a subset under B would be those two different options. But I don't know.
I think it's different.
Do you want to add it as its own thing?
Right up there.
I think you have the marker. I think whoever, whoever volunteers to take the notes has.
She has the speaking stick.
All right. Any other burning housing and homelessness ones, or can we move on to high-performing government? Councilmember, sorry.
This is context-dependent, so it's not, it's maybe not as.
Right on the board.
Yeah, I don't know. You guys decide what you want to do with it. But, but something along the lines of Hopewell Summit, right? Seeing those make progress should be a thing in our budget.
Oh.
Say what?
Well, I think that that's, that, yeah.
I'm sorry. I said it might be a little too specific.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's too specific, because it's exactly the point I was, I was saying before I said it, but like, I mean, yeah, maybe that just falls under A already, so.
I would actually argue that that's not too specific, especially if we're talking about goals for 2027.
Yeah.
That like, maybe it could fall underneath any of a number of things, but, you know, framing it almost like continuing development pace of already planned projects or something like that, or follow-through maybe? Follow-through on already planned projects? Yeah, go ahead and add it, Councilmember Rosenberger.
You decide, you got the pimp.
Follow-through on already planned projects. And then specifically, it's Hopewell and Summit. All right. And then we're gonna move to high-performing government. Would somebody else like to, to take the notes for high-performing government? Or Councilmember Rosenberger, do you like having the, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. So under high-performing government, we have four items. We have engagement processes are inclusive and representative. Community engagement is strong. Responding to the results from the community survey. Those three were from the comprehensive plan. And then the last one is from the climate action plan. New financing mechanisms are achieved to fund city climate action plan implementation. Councilmember, sorry, would you like to?
No, it's an aside, I'll say it some other time.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything to add to high-performing governance? Councilmember Flaherty?
I think actually this system and like, in particular, having a set of plans that broadly reflects the major range of city responsibilities and services is, to me, maybe the highest, like, a very high, high-performing governance goal. And so public safety is an example, right? Like, we wanted to work on public safety with the administration, the prior administration. We weren't successful in being able to find a collaborative structure to do that, so we created a community advisory and public safety commission. They did a bunch of community engagement outreach, created a plan, or at least a set of recommendations, right? Think how much better that could be if it was a mayoral council process like other city plans. And so how much that could actually get alignment around shared goals and vision for the public safety system at large that we often struggle to do now? So like, surely there are some operational type things that aren't gonna enter that sphere, but I think there are major categories missing from like, what I would call city plans. And I think like actually moving toward that would be an important outcome. Achieving that would be an important outcome.
So city plans for things that don't currently have plans?
Yes.
Or collaborative plans?
Implement a system with jointly developed, community-uniformed city plans that broadly reflect the full range of city services and operations. I don't know.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, however you want to shorten that. I'm gonna leave that to you. Councilmember.
I think that's something we should discuss further because the question is like budgetary, because I agree, I agree with the, with the goal, but then budgetarily, I'm like, okay, how do we do that? Is it, is it like we want money for more, like more consultants? Do we want like, right? And so, like, what's the, like, what's the, I suppose that there is a, just thinking budgetarily, because again, I think your example, your example is a really strong one, but it's like, how, how do we stop that from being a runaway train of like, ah, we're just gonna do all these plans, which is contrary to also the conversation we had last year with budget, right?
No, we'd have to agree on what's missing, what needs updated, and like reflect what's a reasonable scope. I mean, like, that would be entailed. I think it would have to be funded. Often, we don't have either expertise or capacity in house, at least to independently and fully develop something like that, especially something that could have a uniform, fairly uniform system of outcomes, metrics, KPIs, lead indicators, that could actually allow us to have a whole system. So that, that will entail funding. It will entail some conversation to like have agreement on like where we're headed, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't be a set of budget, it's like relatively minor, probably in terms of like overall budget impact and how long that would last, but it does cost money, so.
Yeah. But I think, and just following up to that, the thing I was laughing about earlier is, because this is, I mean, reading it again in this context, object C, thing C, respond to the results from the community survey, I think is like, is like such a fascinating statement, right? Like, it really is because it's, because it's like a contested thing. We're always like, well, the community survey says this, it's like, ah, well, you know, other things, say other things. And so like, it's, I think, I just think a very fascinating thing to bring up here, but it raises, it does get back to Councilmember Flaherty's structural point here, which is there may be a reframing of C a little bit to be like, we actually need the capacity to do that. Like, this is a nice intention, and I think that, I wonder the extent to which we can actually.
I would argue that that's not the question that we're talking about tonight. I would argue that if we as a council all want, all mark that as our top priority in high-performing government, then what we're doing is we're asking the administration to figure out a way to fund that.
Correct.
And that's, so we're not asking, we're not trying to figure out how to fund it today.
No, I'm with you. I'm with you.
I'm still talking.
Okay, I was still talking before when you started talking. The thing, the thing about, the thing about the respond to the results from the community survey, the thing that I was saying is that question about structure is like, there, I think there's this interesting point here that should be on high-performing government, which is like funding our capacity to do things like responding to the results from the community survey. That's what I'm saying, not, not, we need to figure out how do we do this? I'm just saying, like, to Councilmember Flaherty's point, what are the structures necessary to actually act on the plans that we're going to develop is an interesting thing to put on as, as an outcome there.
Pre-conditions, kind of, like, they need to be enabling conditions, they need to be in place to like be able to do the whole thing we're trying to do.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Councilmember, sorry. Increase capacity to?
I don't know. That's what, I was asking what it was before I was told that we weren't allowed to say that, so I don't know. But that was what I was trying to explore, the question of like, what would that be? This question of, you know, increasing our capacity to be responsive, like, but that seems circular to the topic, so.
Councilmember Rosenberger?
Question, thank you. I don't know, oh, here we go. Question 2D. Where did that specifically come from? It feels so specific compared to A, B, and C. So new financing mechanisms are achieved to fund the climate action plan? I mean, because, well, that is my question.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, that was in the climate action plan.
To find new funding mechanisms?
Yeah, that's why it says cap goal, whatever.
Okay. Because I, I guess I think for all of our plans, well, they all need to, all of our community goals and plans, they need to be funded. So it's okay, I guess that they actually, the climate action plan actually typed it out. But I think of high-performing government, like, a lot of this is based around resident engagement. Well, the first three are, but I think too, like engagement is inherently unequal and like, we, there's nothing in here about a high-performing government that is like governing for those that are not, that are not at the meetings. And so like, to me, that is data-driven and, and also like our community plans and goals driven. So like, to me, a high-performing government is a government that is reaching its goals sometimes without having to check 20 times with the public to be like, can we still do this goal? So like, it's also, I mean, it's about being efficient. So, I mean, just like transportation plan related, right? We have this community, like, high-priority network, and still, we're going back and doing a year at a time to study a street. But we've already, we already have a transportation plan with, like, kind of changing these streets. So I guess I think like, acting on our goals is high-performing. And then, you know, kind of doing something about how like, public engagement is not a subset of our, it's not representative of our population, right? It's, it, it's just, it's just not like an evaluation survey or something. It's just a group that came out. Sorry about my.
So can we, can you tilt the board so that we can see it? So should that increase capacity to, from Councilmember, sorry, be complete, increase capacity to implement city plans, or implement existing plans? Is that just what you were saying?
I don't think, I don't think it has to be connected to that. I mean, I think high-performing government is.
So do you just want to be implement?
Yeah, like, work on like attaining city grade-on goals, right? Like, I think that is high-performing to me, I guess. Like, I think that is high performing to me, I guess.
Okay. So, implementation of existing plans.
Other people can say no to that as well.
Does anybody want to challenge Councilmember Rosenberg's assertion of putting that as All right, next, other high performing government additions. Councilmember Rallo.
Well, it's related, maybe. I think it would be helpful to have a status report of maintenance of, maintenance and services in the city. In other words, where are we in terms of road paving and, you know, scheduling and priorities of road paving or whatnot? There was a point when, totally unknown to me, that the fire department fell into great disrepair. Their, their fire engines literally had holes in the floor. And to his credit, Mayor Hamilton stepped up and discovered this, and we made a lot of capital investment in fire engines. It took everybody, it took most of council by surprise. So, if we had, you know, some basic report, status report of departments in terms of, you know, capacity of water treatment or, you know, you know, whatever it is, then we would have a baseline, I think, that we could refer to.
So, Councilmember Piedmont Smith wrote that up there as maintain city assets. So, would that be the overarching outcome? And then?
Maintain city.
Assets.
Assets, yes.
Yeah. And so, then, there would be potentially several, you know, subcategories underneath that of how exactly to make sure all those things are maintained, but does that?
Yeah. And I would assume that every department head is already aware of this and could communicate it in, you know, a brief presentation during budget time.
Okay.
You know? And that way, this, it's also informative to the public. I mean, the public, a lot of the public doesn't know everything the city does. And, you know, these basic services and maintenance would be helpful to them to know.
All right. Other outcomes to put under high performing government. Councilmember Asari?
I think we need something about council and clerk's office here to, but I'm struggling to think, so I'm just putting out there and, again, hoping that we can talk about it, like, things around time of our meetings, accessibility of our meetings, things of that nature. I think maybe investments in accessibility might be relevant.
For our 2027? Sorry, I'm hesitating on that because we're federally required right now to invest a whole ton in accessibility. So, I'm questioning whether that should be an outcome for 2027 that we want to focus on.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you mean more broadly?
I think broadly, there's, yeah, some, there's council functioning, council functioning, clerk functioning needs to fall under this banner of high performing government, and we should have some, some discussion about that, too.
Okay. Councilmembers, you look.
Thank you. I have a different comment. Just, when we think about the engagement process, if we truly want it to be inclusive and representative, the majority of the people who are most impacted by the decisions that we make are never in this room. And so, when we think about the engagement process, what we should be thinking about is what rooms do we need to be in as individual policymakers that will help better inform us for the people who cannot be in these rooms because they're working? Or taking care of their children? Or both? Thank you.
Is that, does that go into one of our, into an outcome category in some way that can be like categorized? Or does, I mean, I feel like that kind of falls under A, engagement processes are includes, inclusive and representative? Because I do feel like that includes like, the onus on us as government to go to places where people are and not just expect them to come to us in terms of those engagement processes. I feel like that includes a whole lot of stuff.
Yes, it does. I just wanted to make sure that I said it because it's very broad. And so, if we left it broad, I just wanted to make sure that I made that point.
Okay. So, we want a subcategory underneath engagement processes that is a focus on going out instead of expecting people to come in?
Yes. I think the onus should be on us.
Okay. So, reaching out as part of engagement, I guess?
Yes.
All right. Any other additions for high performing government? And I do want to note that it's 7:47 right now, and we have like, four more of these to go. Councilmember Rallo?
I think it's a great idea. I think that, you know, council's done it before in the, in the past. It sometimes helps coordinate with the administration to have, you know, relevant department heads maybe join us in, you know, our outreach to the public or going outside of council chambers, meeting in various places in the city. So, it's something to coordinate with the administration.
Okay. Do you have another thing to add? Because just for clarity, I really want to, want to get us through making the list so that then we can prioritize the list that we make. Otherwise, we're never going to get to the prioritizing part. Councilmember Rosenberg.
What I would like to say is, I don't think we're getting through the list. But number two is, I think that's okay. Number two is, based on our meeting that we had two hours ago, plus other things that come to light sometimes, maybe, I don't know if Councilmember Rallo was saying this, but there's no high performance right now between the administration and city council. And I don't know what that looks like, you know? But it's definitely not learning about something a couple of days before there's a $7 million vote, you know? So, maybe, you know, being brought in, being, having council be seen as a co-equal branch of government, I don't know exactly. I mean, we can say words like collaboration and communication, but I think those don't really go anywhere. So, I don't know if anybody has a good outcome. I mean, I guess it's an outcome, not, yes? Well, I don't get to call on you.
Something about information exchange, maybe? Could that encompass it?
It may not be budgetary. Sometimes, in like, smart goals or smarty goals context, when I'm having a hard time finding exactly how to measure something, just like an as assessed by X through Y process can kind of get you there. And so, you know, if we had mutual set of questions and ratings from the mayor and her chief people about engaging and functioning with the council and vice versa, just some check-ins on how's it going? Do we feel like we're a part of the conversation on important policy matters? Do, you know, like, actually measuring that, like, could help move beyond just like, being frustrated about a thing and speaking about it? I don't think that's like necessarily a budget priority, but I do think it matters.
High performing government.
I think that it's a outcome.
I don't know how big a budgetary implication, I guess.
Yeah. Well, I think that goes back to what Councilmember Asari was saying earlier, I think it was him, that like, some things cost a lot and some things don't cost as much, but they can still be important outcomes, so.
Sure, sure. Right. And to the.
Maybe communication systems.
To the point kind of, I mean, at the very outset of the meeting, which is that like, a lot of things to achieve outcomes are actually just policy changes, they might not entail any like, real discernible budget item at all. So.
Okay. I think that this is going to be my goal. I think that my goal is to get through economic development as a third bucket, and then we can prioritize within those. Maybe we can take public comment after we make our lists, and then after public comment, we can just do the ranking of the three things that we have done. So, economic development has a whole lot of outcomes that are already listed in our packet. And some of them, I think, have already, were, are already currently occurring. Like, number one, quality wired and wireless connectivity is available throughout the city. B, income inequality is reduced across and between all ages, races, and genders. Career, C, career pathways and training are engaging residents and businesses. D, entrepreneurial activity has increased and a culture of entrepreneurialism is being sustained. E, wages, jobs, and GDP are outpacing population growth. F, enhance the arts and culture industry in Bloomington. G, downtown events are frequent and well-attended. H, the downtown business environment is vibrant and sustainable. And I, downtown buildings and sites with blight or disrepair have been identified and remedied. All of those are from the comp plan. Then we have two climate action goals. One, the local marketplace is resilient to climate change. And two, increased number of businesses that are committed to sustainability and climate goals. Who has something to add to the economic development outcome list? Councilmember Daly?
Attract employers offering living wage jobs.
Which is maybe a subcategory under E for creation of wages and jobs, but a very specific metric of living wage. Does anybody want to, want to debate that one with Councilmembers Daly? All right. Other additions under economic development? I know it's already a pretty big list for economic development. Councilmember Rosenberg, you look like you might have something to say.
I think, thank you. I think the list is, it's like weirdly more specific than other lists, and I don't know if we, that matters right now. I mean, just sort of downtown events are frequent and well-attended is, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like it's on the same level. But I guess you said earlier, we're just going to put stuff out there and then decide if it kind of stays or moves around later. That's it.
Other things that people can think of to add? I see a couple of people like, almost saying something, like, they almost have an addition and not quite. Councilmember Rosenberg?
It's because I don't have the thought form, like, it's fine, it's just usual. I'm really burnt out after that last meeting. I, I don't know where this goes or exactly, but it's like, it's kind of like modern day economic development that is very, like, it's more about like, creating third places, I guess, the pop phrase, buzz phrase, right? That like, how we talk about like, Kirkwood has a shared street, so like, a place that we don't have in the city where people can go outside, like, and be in this place where they can eat and drink and shop and buy things. Like, we don't, but, you know, like, without the constraints of like, needing a car or something. But, so, it's kind of like, I think this, to me, like, this economic development goal that is connected to like, the comprehensive plan of more like neighborhood hubs, or like, just that we have these areas, like neighborhood hubs and third places, see how this isn't properly formed, but like, it's, thanks, Isaac. I think it's, because I feel like this is a lot about businesses, A through K, kind of, but like, economic development is also about creating the place, the places that make community and feel like a community. And I feel like that's not like, really one of the outcomes that's on here right now.
Okay. So, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, create vibrant third places?
Thank you, that's fine.
Or maybe slash that.
Neighborhood hubs.
Neighborhood hubs, because that might be more understandable to, more. Does anybody want to question or challenge Councilmember Rosenberg's addition? I feel like that's in the comprehensive plan somewhere, too.
The hub is, for sure, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that in the comprehensive plan, it might be under housing, but I think it's one of those things that can go into multiple categories. Councilmember Rallo?
I'm in agreement. I think it, it jibes well with some of these other goals. Downtown business environment is vibrant and sustainable, downtown events. So, it seems important to have public spaces where people gather and then support businesses. And to the extent that people feel welcome and safe and that it's an aesthetic place and that, you know, it's conducive. So, Councilmember Rosenberg, you were kind of reiterating what you said.
Got it.
Yeah, to that.
All right. Any other economic development additions? Councilmember Asari?
Empty spaces, there's empty, you know, processes to fill, empty storefronts, et cetera.
Okay. Are you mostly thinking about the first-floor retail?
First-floor retail, things on the square, you know? And maybe a subpoint to, you know, spaces are activated, right? But, which is on here already. But, you know, what can we do to get more businesses into places if, if there's some way to do that through investment?
Yeah. I think that that could be a new one, activating currently vacant spaces, because it's not necessarily, you don't necessarily need to activate it with entrepreneurial activity, which is D, and those spaces aren't necessarily in blight or disrepair, which is I.
Mm-hmm.
But they just, yeah, it's that first-floor retail that we required people to build, but did not require that they fill. Does anybody want to challenge that as an outcome? Councilmember Ruff?
Well, I'm not sure I want to challenge it, but, you know, I like that we, we don't really have any place that I see in here that suggests that growth in the physical environment or even our population is necessarily a goal in its own right, just, just growth. So, maybe under that one we're talking about, D, entrepreneurial activity is increased, maybe putting per capita in there. Because one could have entrepreneurial activity increased, but actually not benefit, because per capita, it's not really helping. You're just growing things and maybe having the total of more entrepreneurial activity. So, maybe just having something here that.
So, per capita income growth or per capita economic growth, is that?
Well, yeah. I mean, but that particular one, D, entrepreneurial activity has increased. You know, in total, that doesn't necessarily tell us anything of whether it's benefiting the other, our goals, our economic goals, unless we say, if we're, if we're, if we want more entrepreneurial activity, are we talking here about just more? Or are we talking about more, like, per, per unit, per capita, for more, more entrepreneurial initiative and activity and encouragement and investment?
I can't tell if you're suggesting a new outcome or if you're just kind of commenting on an existing one that you are not sure of.
It's the only thing I see in the whole list that doesn't, that suggests that maybe we're just talking about just more.
Councilmember Asari?
Yeah, I was actually, I've been, I've been thinking about this, is that I wonder if this bucket might be, might be better called economic health or something like that than, than economic development, which to your point, I think, I think we've done a good job of not framing it all as just, you know, growth for growth's sake or anything like that. But, but I was just thinking about like, to this broader point about space-making, place-making, which I, which I know we've considered, but I, I think, as we continue to have this conversation about economic development, I think it would be useful for us to think about, it's a, it is a very wide category, and think about what we want to prioritize in terms of this, you know, the years ahead, things that we really want to see invested in to create more vitality and health in the economy. And so, I also, in addition to like vibrant third places, I'm thinking about a vibrant art scene, for example, more spaces for performance, you know, studios, and I know a lot of that's in progress, so, but, but thinking about some things like that. I think people often call those like backwaters as well, sort of in art scenes, interested in that. I'm also interested in thinking about, there's some demographic conversations here, so, we talked about attracting businesses that pay living wage, yes, but it's also about how do we attract, like, the. do we attract like the, that age group that's sort of missing in Bloomington, and, yeah, and, but yeah, so thinking about those broader categories, I think, is useful, too.
Yeah, and this starts to kind of blend in a little bit with community health and vitality, which is one of the topics.
Right, exactly.
Because that, there's also the arts and cultural events in that section as well.
Exactly.
So that's where they're overlapping a bit.
Well, and I would also like to point out that Councilmember Piedmont Smith made this list kind of in isolation to the best that she could, in terms of what things fit where, and that another piece of comment could also be, hey, I think that, you know, this thing should actually go under a different bucket instead of the one that it's under, that we're not tied to these lists being in certain places. But to that point, do we need to add something to, okay, this was what I was thinking, to add, instead of being it called economic development, you know, to be economic health as the title? Like, does that matter in terms of what we think about going under?
I like health.
Does, does anybody want to, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm trying to understand how to capture the conversation that, or the comments from Councilmember Rallo and Councilmember Asari as another point here. I mean, I think label, coming up with a new label for the heading, that is not as important as making sure to capture what was said as, like, so, Councilmember Rallo, how would you express this desire to not have growth for growth's sake as like an outcome desire?
Well, actually, Councilmember Asari, he did a great job of getting at what I was getting at when he referred also to, for example, the arts, right? It's not just more, we want more per, to enrich, you don't get, necessarily get enrichment just from having more.
So it's quality over quantity? Is quality a word that you want to stick in there somewhere?
Well, but it's, it's also this whole idea of, you know, per unit, like this per capita. That's what we're trying to, that's our goal ultimately, right? It's, that's how things are made better. So I kind of like Councilmember Asari's idea of using this term health, or somehow making it more clear in the general, and then we wouldn't have to specifically identify, like the specific subareas if we've captured it with this larger conceptual term. I don't, I don't.
So, so doesn't necessarily go on there as an additional outcome, but that, or are you just not sure right now?
Well, that's what I was thinking initially, but after Councilmember Asari made his comments, I'm thinking, it captures more to have a, have something beyond just an outcome.
I just want to make sure that I, that I, that we get something up there, if there's something that you want up there, but I'm still not sure what it would be that you would want up there. But Councilmember Piedmont Smith is, just wrote per capita.
You know, yeah, I mean, I'm happy with that being just in D, you know, but, but I like what Councilmember Asari was getting at, that this is really our whole larger goal here, because economics should include things he was mentioning, like, you know, we're enriching the arts, people's lives through the arts, equality of life here.
I don't know, maybe you're kind of talking, too, about like, I, when Councilmember Asari was talking, I thought it did also kind of like go under like vibrant third places and hubs, just like, it feels kind of like, almost like enhancing those communities more, like the arts community. I don't know if that's kind of like making it a draw for like, oh, I want to go create in Bloomington because people are creating, and in the space, and there are like warehouses that you rent. I don't know, I just, maybe you're saying, it's, to me, sounds, yeah, more like a space-making or place-making specific, I don't know. I mean, because it does in here say enhance the arts, right? But you're not, that's not it. It sounds like you're more of.
Yeah, I'm not sure I captured, but it just stemmed from seeing what Councilmember Piedmont Smith had kind of given us here, and noticing that it was pretty clear that we weren't talking just about growth for the sake of growth, but then I saw that one D, on D, on item D, that it just simply said, increase entrepreneurialism, and got me to thinking, we want to be consistent with everything, and that could be misinterpreted. But, I mean, I'm okay not to add anything, but we had the discussion and it was productive, I feel like.
Okay, I do want to note that Councilmember Piedmont Smith did add per capita economic slash arts enhancement, so, yeah. Any other additions under economic development? Councilmember Rallo?
We're still under economic development? Yeah, I mean, this is sort of land use related, but I think we've ignored a whole section of, within the land use chapter, which has to do with economic development, and that is the concept of an urban village center. So, I mean, it's a big ask, because there's a lot entailed, but that does appear in our comprehensive plan. Is there any effort devoted to urban village centers?
Well, I think that that's what's up there right now, under vibrant third places or neighborhood hubs, that Councilmember, the neighborhood hubs.
Oh, great. Could you just write urban, i.e. urban village center?
Okay.
Because that's how it appears in the comp plan?
Yeah, because I would think, is it, is it in the comp plan as urban village center? Because I thought it was in there under neighborhood hub.
In the planning chapter, it is.
Okay, might be both.
There's the food, the systems there as well, which plays a role, yeah.
All right, any other additions up there?
I realize this probably goes more on high-performing government, but as I talked about permitting for housing, I think business permitting also matters here, sort of licenses and permitting falls somewhere in between these two. So, just throwing it out there. And so, same thing, you know, improving the speed, ease, customer service, you name it, of people trying to do business here. Trying to put signs up as well.
Other additions, or are we ready to go to public comment right now? All right, seeing no other additions, I do want to go to public comment next, because it is 8:20, and so, or 8:10, and so I want to recognize that we do have a couple of members of the public in the room, and I see that there are some online participants as well. So, we'll have public comment, and during public comment, if councilmembers can think about more than one thing at a time, think about how you might pick your top three priorities amongst these economic development, high-performing government, and housing and homelessness that we have really drilled down on this evening. And if members of the public would like to speak, I see somebody coming to the table in person. If you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hand using the reactions tab, but we'll go ahead and start here in chambers. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes. And I, the clerk is out right now, but we'll figure out a sign-in sheet for you in a minute. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher Rege from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I think this is the closest I've been next to you during public comment. It's very close. Deliberation meeting tonight, I don't think it's quite, you're going to hit your greatest hits album, but I think there are some good notes that I want to disconnect and talk about. When we talk about granular improvements, one thing with the outcome-based budget, I worry about, that this is going to be all too encompassing, and you'll get a lot of places, and then ultimately nowhere. So keep that incremental improvement on where you're at. One of the things I wanted to talk about, that I just sort of circled, I highlighted, was Councilmember Rallo's statement about maintaining city assets. This is what you have data on already from all of the departments. I know Public Works has their software, and take a look at that, where we're at on just paving, or cars, and with the Parks Department, and see where we're on that, if that is a priority. That's something that you can dig in right away and have a really good deliberation meeting with these department heads, and see where we're at on that, because I think that's one probably outcome everybody wants. I mean, there's probably universal. The one thing I also want to then go to, that you just talked about, was on the economic development front, where we just don't want more for more's sake. I mean, as we look at SB 1 and look at where the revenue is going to come to pay for these outcomes that we want, it's going to come from local lit. What is local lit going to take? Working people here. So what growth we want is specifically working-age people here in the community, living here. And that, so that would go against certain other residents who maybe aren't full-time residents here, and less on ones that are not working. So those are things that we have to look at, because as we look at the economies of scale, that piece of pie, we need to have the growth that with income, where we're not burdening too few, too few residents and not getting the outcomes we want. If there's anything else on here. And I just think one thing to work on, if you're not this round, this is the year to sort of look at, if you're not getting the data you want, is start looking at some dashboard ideas on getting that for the future. So you really have great indicators, or go, what are we missing here? What data do we not have on some of these outcomes that we want? You're, you're supposed to make the best decisions possible, and if you don't have certain data, this is the time to start looking at how we're going to get that. I thank you for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you. There is a sign-in sheet there right now. If you could sign in, that would be great. Did anybody raise a hand on Zoom?
Yes, we have one.
Wonderful, let's go ahead to Zoom next, and if somebody else in chambers wants to make a comment, you can come on up. Whenever you're unmuted on Zoom, go ahead, state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Kevin Keough. I'm a longtime accountant, audity professional, and born and raised Bloomington resident. I appreciate the city's move towards outcome-based budgeting, because it aligns with professional best practices for accountability and financial stewardship. My goal tonight is simple, to help strengthen transparency and ensure that this process delivers real value to the public. I want to highlight two fundamentals that are absolutely critical to the success of outcome-based budgeting. A clear understanding of fixed costs and the use of meaningful key performance indicators. Outcome-based budgeting only works if the city has a precise understanding of which costs are locked in. These are fixed costs that the city is obligated to pay, such as debt services, contractual obligations, baseline personnel cost. But there's also flexible costs. These are the variable costs, or semi-variable costs, and these costs can be adjusted, they can be trimmed, they can be expanded, depending on strategic needs. Right now, the city is preparing to prioritize outcomes, housing, safety, economic development, transportation, health, and tonight, the environmental categories, that. But unless we know the true cost structure of the city operation, we risk prioritizing outcomes that cannot be financially supported. As fiscal pressures grow, and they will, especially with SEA 1, reducing our revenues, Bloomington must be able to act with agility, including making difficult decisions when necessary. That requires distinction between core unavoidable costs and areas where efficiencies can be introduced. Without clarity, prioritization becomes symbolic rather than strategic. Moving on, key performance indicators. The outcomes-based budgeting only works if outcomes are measurable. The comprehensive plan and the climate action plan, they already have excellent indicators. These are exactly the kinds of performance measures that should anchor this new budgeting process. But to be efficient and effective, KPIs must be few in number, not dozens, but few in number, directly tied to these outcomes, regularly reported to the public, and also used to make budget decisions. If the city sets priorities today without simultaneously establishing these key performance indicators, real measure of progress, the process becomes aspirational instead of actionable. I want to encourage the council to require that every prioritized outcomes be paired with a very small set of measurable indicators before funding decisions are made. I commend the council for moving in this direction.
Thank you, Mr. Keough.
Oh, I'm out of time, so.
Yep, you're out of time.
I think we need to know, what are we trying to achieve? How much does it truly cost? And are we making progress to the goal? Those are the three top items. Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much. Has anybody else raised a hand on Zoom? Okay, and nobody else came forward from chambers. So I think that we'll close public comment period, thank you to those who commented. And for our last 15 minutes, because we usually try to end these at 8:30, councilmembers, let's go ahead and notate our top three outcomes from what we have. And I do want to make clear for Mr. Keough that we're not actually setting priorities today, there's just not time for that, but that this is the, kind of the first discussion of many for 2027. So, give everybody a few minutes to write down and wander around and do that.
Could you clarify again what we're doing?
We're, we're doing the activity that you wanted us to do in the beginning, with writing the top three things down, but we're only looking at the, the three outcome lists that we've, no, on your post-it note, write down your top three, yep, put your initials. So, so, and, and so we need to see where the housing and homelessness sheet is. Oh, okay, it's, it's kind of, we'll just move one of those to another place. So go ahead and put your post-it note. So for example, under housing and homelessness, if you want to, you know, rank your, your top priority as A, your second as B, and your third as C, then that's what you do, put your initials on it and stick it on the board. So you should have three post-it notes, and on each post-it note, there are three items. Three post-it notes and three items.
What about the ones that are here listed on the computer?
Wait, what?
One item per post-it, three priorities total across all categories.
Because we don't have everything written down.
Well, no, that's why I was figuring you were going to, we have to write some things on post-it notes.
So, I was, I was going to suggest we write what our priority, our top priority is, put a number one by it, put our initials by it, and then stick it on the relevant board.
Okay, so we should have three post-it notes per sheet?
Yes.
So we should have nine post-it notes?
Oh, got it.
Okay, but we do have to write what our priority is on the post-it note, because some of our priorities are on the computer, and some of them are on the big piece of paper.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, we're doing nine post-it notes, or three?
Three for each area.
Three for each board.
Or if you can only think of two, that's fine, but two or three for each board, please.
Okay, I'm going to struggle with the combined hybrid slash.
We're, we're all doing the best we can.
So we've moved one to the wall.
Oh, yes, please note, economic development is all the way over there, and.
These tables are aggressive.
Yeah, they really are. They're very firm.
We were told on sticky notes.
It exists.
Sidney, can I ask, to what goal is that referring, the diversity of town? The diversity one?
Yes.
Here's diversity, it's a theme.
Yeah. Got it.
We're twinning.
I'd really like to walk out of here at 8:30.
Yeah, you should report, you need to report about this.
Yeah, we need to get that on the agenda. Sorry, sorry.
You want to see this one about income inequality? Okay? It's economic development.
Well, I know that's always true. I mean, like, it was very important. All right, well, that was fun.
Isak, I'm seeing yours, I'm going 1A. Who's categorized A, B, and C? I was like, oh, wait, no, that's, sorry.
I totally realized that halfway through, and overcut some of them.
I'm over there.
Where's the word? Yeah, this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. I didn't even put 3 on your legs.
I just like, I saw it over there too, and I was like, what, A? Like, who's doing that? All right, is everybody finished with our, with our assignment for the evening? Councilmember Zulik and Councilmember Ruff, if we play our cards right, we can, we can socialize in just a moment. I have a feeling that it would have been great to go through all of our number ones, twos, and threes, but that we just do not have the capacity this evening to do that. And so my thought would be that we need to repeat this maybe two, or three, or six, or seven more times next year. So I had to slip that in for my kids, Isabel. So saying that, does anybody at this point have any last comments? I think that the next step should be that somebody, fiscal committee-wise, will need to record all of these responses from us as council members, and then use that as a jumping off point for the next discussion about this. And I guess I would be open, as a fiscal committee member, I would be open, people saying right now, would you rather have part two be talking about what we've done here, or part two being, like, doing what we did here for public safety, transportation, and mobility, community health and vitality, and environment? Because we have to also go through all of those outcomes in the same way that we just did. So, Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, well, I have some concluding comments, but specific to that, I would like to see where this shakes out, because that would give me some perspective on evaluating the other topics coming forward. Because this is a learning process for me, I find out what priorities my colleagues have, and it's good to have this discussion, because my mind is open, changes. I mean, I was, I was, I was found some of the things that were said tonight very compelling. So it's a, it's a learning process to me, so I'd like to actually go through next time and just evaluate where we're at with that.
Okay. All right, is everybody good with that? Great, we'll kind of take that then and go with it. Does anybody else want any closing comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, good with that as the next step. Also just want to like, express some caution in like, doing side-by-side comparisons of comprehensive plan goals that went through extensive community-informed vetting processes, legislative processes with like, yeah, this is important in like this meeting, right? Which is like, not to say it's not important, but like, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that like, yes, to Mr. Mj's point, we need to make incremental progress, like if we are going to adopt a framework where it's like, hey, actually, we need, these plans need to be updated to speak a common language around a limited set of KPIs that are useful to us to achieving their outcomes, and we need a public safety plan and a something else plan that does that too. If we make those types of decisions, we're not going to have those plans at hand this year for the 2027 budget. So we should, I think it'd be helpful also to have a structural conversation about like, can we get our alignment eventually around some of those things, also from the mayor's administration, obviously? And then what does the kind of like bridge process look like? Obviously, you all were engaged in that this year too, on like a bridge process, so I think that's just important to like, continue to keep in mind as we grapple with this.
Okay, yeah, I second that. I also kind of went through and at some point realized, oh yeah, we're supposed to be thinking about 2027 specifically, so that was a little missing maybe from our conversation. Councilmember, sorry.
Yeah, just I'm also seconding what Councilmember Flaherty said, and taking a little further, just a thought that occurred to me through this process, is that in agreement of, yeah, this has helped us start to realize areas where we need more plans, 100% also concur that some of our plans have gone through comprehensive, I should think of a better word, but you know, like full, full processes. One of the things, though, that I have a lot of hope for here is that we get to take steps in the direction of creating plans through this budget process, because it requires at least a twofold, with ideally a lot of public engagement. So, so you know, we sort of get to, you know, in some type of agile way, go through some of that planning that can start building some of those building blocks to sort of more formalized plans, I mean, these areas where we're missing. And so with that said, you know, to the, to the question on the table of what do we want to do next time, yeah, I'm totally for us continuing to talk as we have, and, but I would, I would just say, as we've said multiple times, I'm hopeful that we do this process of talking through the budget and our priorities, and the things that we would like to see in the shape, like continually, not in some episodic fashion, that we sort of do it, and then we say, okay, we did it here, this is what we came up with, you know, you guys do the rest, but that we, you know, keep working through this for the rest of the year. I'm really excited that we started this so early, that we'll get a lot of opportunities to continue.
Other closing comments? Councilmember Rallo?
I wanted to respond to public comment, and I totally agree with Kevin Keough that performance indicators for every outcome is a very important thing to keep in mind. It's not enough to just say, this has been addressed, or you know, we've made an effort, but really to determine to what extent. The other thing is, I wanted to respond to Mr. Mj, that with budget limitations, adding more people to Bloomington to raise revenue via the lit is one way to operate. However, more people require more services and require more infrastructure, and that should be recognized too. Another approach could be to raise wages. That doesn't entail adding expenses with more people, but it raises more revenue. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Other closing comments?
Yeah, I'll just have my, the bottom line is here. So this is regarding Councilmember Flaherty.
Can you use the microphone so that then people online can hear you?
Regarding Councilmember Asari and Councilmember Flaherty's comments, it sort of means that, where's the one, it sort of means that.
Microphone.
Better communication with council and mayor is, that's sort of got to become the number one priority almost, if we're going to do, that was my comment.
He did. All right, coming back to the other, any other closing comments? Okay, my closing comment has to do with council schedule. Next Monday, the 15th, there is a special session that was called by the mayor regarding the Hopewell development. It is at 4:00 PM, and I actually meant to get on my calendar what, what room it's in, but that is not on my calendar right now. Can staff help me out with what room that session is in on the 15th? Great, thank you so much.
Is it council meeting?
It is a special session council meeting, yes. The mayor called it. According to code, the mayor can call a special session. There's an email about it, if you missed.
Did I miss a scheduling poll? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
I think you may have responded to it.
Oh, maybe I responded. Oh, yes, yes, there's too much of a time lag and my brain fell off. Yes, yes.
I'm so glad that I mentioned it, yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
That is scheduled, that 4 o'clock, and a quorum of council members did indicate that they could attend, though not everyone indicated that that was a good day for them. I don't think anybody indicated it was a bad day for them, just not everybody responded. So hopefully, that all works on your calendars, 4:00 PM, Monday, the 15th. Is it McCloskey, or is it in here?
Allison.
It is Allison, an Allison conference room upstairs, and that, of course, is open to the public. It is kind of like a Hopewell-related work session, but the mayor has a plan for that. And then our last regular session of the year is next Wednesday at 6:30 on the 17th. So.
Oh, no, there's another clapping thing.
Can, can we manage the last bit of this meeting? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you have a note on schedule?
Yes, we have a committee on council processes meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in the Allison conference room.
Great, thank you so much. No, we don't. All right, barring other announcements about schedule, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.